Hello, everyone, and welcome to the Fort Mill Town Council Regular Meeting for May the 10th, 2021. I apologize for the momentary delay in starting the meeting. We had some folks out front that are here about an annexation request, and I needed to ensure that they could understand that we only allow one person in at a time to protect everyone's health and safety, but that we will do everything that is needed to hear their thoughts on this particular request for annexation. So, thank you for your patience. Looking forward to our meeting. I do believe we have Chris Moody and Lisa Cook that are online virtually this evening. We do have Councilmember Shiree Helms, Ms. Hemsaw, and myself in person this evening. So, we're looking forward to getting through the work that's before us. With that, we will say the Pledge of Allegiance, and then Mr. Helms will do an invocation for us. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you again for the beautiful day you've given us. We thank you for many blessings of life. We pray that you'll be with us tonight, guide us, direct us with wisdom as we conduct the town's business. We give you praise, glory, and honor in your holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. All right, councilmembers, you have been provided the minutes of the April 26, 2021 Town Council meeting. Are there any changes, deletions, or additions that need to be made?
Here and now, I move to approve the minutes.
All right, I've got a motion to approve and a second. Thank you. All those in favor of the motion to approve the minutes from April 26, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. We have a unanimous vote on the minutes. Public comment. Pursuant to Section 2-46 of the Code of Ordinances for the Town of Fort Mill, any citizen of the town may appear before council for the purpose of providing public comments on any municipal matter except personnel matters. Those who wish to speak must sign in outside of council chambers prior to the start of the meeting. To maintain social distancing, citizens will only be allowed into council chambers one at a time to give their comments. Penelope, do you have a list?
There's no one signed up for the public comment. All other people are signed up for public hearings tonight.
Got it. All right, good. So, we have no one signed up for this segment. We will move forward with presentations. Presentation number one is the recognition of Robbie Hill for 26 years of service with the Town of Fort Mill. Would you invite Robbie and his family, please?
He's old.
He just started young, didn't he?
You know, this is one that I get choked up about. It's always wonderful to recognize someone for the service that they've provided to our community, but it's another thing when that person has been a friend, a confidant, someone, a giant, someone that I can trust and rely upon, as well as every other student in the town. You are someone that has rushed into any situation regardless if it was dangerous or not with that person, that person in mind, not you, not anything else. That's rare, Robbie Hill, and you do it with a smile on your face, and you do it with humility, and we have been so blessed to have you for 26 years in service to the town and its residents. I wish you everything, all the best in your early retirement. We're too young to retire, you know? So, we have a beautiful plaque, and I know that our town manager, Davey, would like to say something as well, but I'll read it. It says, "Robert Thomas Hill." That sounds awfully official, though.
Yes, ma'am.
In appreciation of 26 years of dedicated service to the Town of Fort Mill, you exemplified our value of honesty, integrity, and teamwork, and maintained a steadfast commitment - I got tears in my eyes, that's why I'm not reading it perfectly - commitment to our town. A time to look back with admiration, a time to look forward with anticipation. Our best wishes go with you. I would scratch that out if I had a pen. You're not going anywhere. You're still going to be right here, and you're right there when we need you and when you need us. We love you, Robbie Hill. (Applause).
Robbie and I have been lifelong friends. We played Little League baseball together. Our moms worked together for Fort Mill School District, Fort Mill School District Council. They went to a couple of game basketball games with the family. I can truly say this is a very special moment for me because we've been friends for so long and graduated, were classmates. It's a different path to the Town of Fort Mill, but we both wanted to serve our hometown and get to you, spend, you know, serve your, serve our town, be eligible for retirement, and go out on your own terms and enjoy retirement. I cannot be prouder of the service that you provided at Fort Mill, and I only wish you the best in all of your future endeavors. Good job, man. Appreciate it. Thank you.
I'm ruining my mic there. Well, Robbie?
I feel old.
Yeah, I wish we were 20 and starting today because we have certainly enjoyed the benefits of your labor and your work. I wish we'd had just...
You did. The town's been good to me. You know, I grew up here. I did my thing at the PD, barely got through it, so I'm just going to say thank you. Thanks for the town. That's been good. My thanks.
Still willing. You're welcome.
You're welcome.
Thank you all for raising this time. Councilmembers? Were you in my bed?
So, Robbie, this is Lisa. I know I'm haunting you over the speaker right now, and I hate I'm not there.
Sorry. I remember the day when you started with the police department, and it has gone by so fast, but thank you for being such a blessing for this town. I know your parents were great role models for you, but thank you for being a good role model for your kids, and not just those that are biological, but those that have been in the schools. So, probably a good thing I'm not there in person because we'd be borrowing a whole box of tissues right at this moment, but thank you and congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry.
Hey, don't air back my shit, Robbie.
Yep.
We love you. Thank you so much.
Bring us something.
I know that every community wishes they had the same type of relationship that we have managed to have with our employee base. We have some of the best employees on the face of this earth. They're not just employees, they're our family, and we're grateful for each and every one. So, I hope that they know that. I hope they do recognize how much we all care about them. So, thank you very much. We will move to old business items. There are no old business items this evening, so we'll start with new business items. New business item number one, first reading and public hearing. An ordinance annexing York County Tax Map Number 6530000210 containing approximately 7.30 plus or minus acres located at the southwest corner of Pleasant Road and Whitley Road, Ward 2, Ronnie Helms, and Penelope is our expert. So, we're going to open the public hearing at this point in time, Penelope.
Do we need to make a motion to approve it?
Do we have to make them for the public meeting?
No, not for the hearing.
I was going to say, I didn't think we did.
Okay, we'll make sure.
You can.
I'm going to bring in one at a time.
Thank you very much.
I didn't realize I wanted to...
We're good. We're good. Yes, ma'am? You certainly have that opportunity. We can't be 18. Hi.
Hello, how are you?
And you are?
My name's James Caldwell. I live at 396 San Henry Way.
Okay. All right, Mr. Caldwell, thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you. So, I'd like to give a little bit of background. This same issue proposal came up three years ago, fell in. I don't know why it's back. Maybe it's a different developer, something of that sort. West Goat Homes built neighborhood was behind this in 2005, so I've lived in there about 17 years. They passed on the opportunity to buy the 12 acres because it wasn't developable within the neighborhood that I live, that I put a road right down the middle, houses on each side, and you've got a creek that goes through there. So, that's my main point, is about the creek. It already floods pretty bad. I've got some pictures I can show you the last three years off my iPhone.
Okay.
That's those. There's four pictures, two from different ages.
Right, thank you.
Four different dates that will show you. I like to kind of this five over the pole. See the picture of all of all sides.
Oh, wow.
I may be on each side of me, or about 15 feet off of me. My house is a little bit below the road. It's in a cul-de-sac, little cul-de-sac where the water runs. I have a cul-de-sac there. But those are the kind of current issues that I'm already having, and with this proposal, putting a drainage pond in is not going to be a solution. It's just going to be a dispute, and I don't know where that drainage is going to go when it overflows. So, with these pictures, it's about one and a half inches, seven inches of rain that caused all of this. So, it comes into my yard, it goes down into the fence post, lots of those out, have to replace those.
Okay.
Creek makes a turn there, but it kind of builds up and washes out a real bad. But five floods in three years. These are pictures of four of them. The other one was three years ago. I was in Ireland, England, didn't get a picture of it, but we got at least seven inches of rain there. I keep a rain gauge. My neighbor checked it, she emptied it.
True.
So, I know how much rain comes down there. I'm in the 500-year flood limit, almost no chance of flooding. I still have flood insurance. We've got 15-inch rain that backs the creeks up, that backs the sewers up. Then it comes down, so my house is about that far below the road. Then I would test truck. I don't like risk, so that's why I bought the insurance on it. The other issue is there's no proposed turn lane. This is going, this development, the entrance on the Whitley Road is going to be too close to that intersection. We've already had two kids killed on both sides of that, at Whitley and over near the entrance to my neighborhood. So, our neighborhood pays out of our HOA fees, which is our local government, last I saw was about $16,000 a year for the extra crossing guard. So, we contribute to try to have it, you know, safer for the kids to be able to cross. This is going to really complicate. Picture somebody coming in off of Pleasant, north or south, turning onto Whitley, you know, back that traffic up because trying to get out requires they have to cross to get into that neighborhood. Then you've got school kids getting out. You're going to put a sidewalk on the other side, too, so now you have crossing both ways. This across Pleasant, this across Whitley. It's going to be a complicated situation, so that's just going to complicate it a lot more. I know it's a state regimen of Pleasant, but they put those rumble strips in. I think there's eight strips, three sets of them. My house is 600 feet from that. I paid $6,000 as a lot premium, and I know that's private property, but it's nice having those woods. I knew the story that it wasn't developable land, at least with the developer that put our neighborhood in, and didn't look like it would be developed for a long time. So, that's where I am with where I live, the flood situation, traffic is bad. Putting a retention pond is not a solution. It's still going to dump water right down at the bottom of the bowl. That's where I am. You've got to have some kind of ditch that throws it all the way out to the bridge that's down at the bottom of where we'd be going south towards 160.
Correct.
That's where you're going to have to dump that water, not down in the creek that already floods back. You can see the pictures of how bad it gets. It's still going to get worse with that much runoff that's coming through there. So, thanks for the time, it's 15. Yes?
I have a question, please. So, all these pictures are made from your backyard or of your backyard.
Yes, from my house.
Okay.
I've had it four years, took that three floods in the last two years.
Did you want these pictures back, or can we keep them?
You can keep those.
Thank you. Thank you. We appreciate that.
Get it under my breath there.
And thank you for being thorough and stating what your concerns are and for showing up to do so.
Okay. Thanks for listening.
Thank you so much, Mr. Caldwell. Hi.
Oh, right. Okay. Can you play if we pull our mask down when we see? This is practice, and this is for residents, so you can go first.
Okay. Hi, I'm Carolyn.
Thank you.
So...
Thank you for joining us this evening. You want to tell us something?
Okay. Hi, I'm Carolyn, but I do not want you to go through a building on the slot because of the animals and nature and even the traffic and safety with my mom we'll be talking about. There's been so much building in Fort Mill that the animals are losing their habitat. I think that I advise not have the annexation because of the animal's safety. I've lived in Fort Mill my whole life, and I don't want to see it fall.
My name is Melanie Stone, and I'd rather talk freely, but I'm afraid with my time limit that I won't tell my point until I'm ready. And I've emailed you all, but I also have two packets of data if I can give it to you in Marshall, that just kind of told some of the stuff I'm referencing.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Honorable Mayor Savage and Town Council members, thank you for allowing me to speak today regarding the proposed annexation of the block on the corner of Pleasant and Whitley Road across the street from Pleasant and Whitley. I respectfully request that you nod for the annexation. My requests and concerns relate to traffic and, more importantly, to safety for our area residents and children. In 2018, myself and many of my neighbors asked you not to approve the annexation. Here are the things that have changed since then. The population of Fort Mill has increased from 19,782 in 2018 to over 27,000 in 2020. In 2019, a child riding his bikes to school was hit in the crosswalk on Whitley Road about 200 yards from the slot. In 2020, another child, Ryan Erhowski, was hit and killed at the intersection where the lot was functionally closed. I'm grateful that we now have a traffic signal at this intersection. The DOT approved the signal because of the volume of pedestrians and traffic. Unfortunately, the pedestrian crossing fund has been run over numerous times. There are potential new traffic, and I'm also delighted to do. In addition to my conversation with the DOT, accidents have increased about 300 to 400% since the traffic signal was installed. The DOT estimated the traffic level of service during six school hours to be a Level C, meaning traffic is significantly impacted. The DOT also advised me that any traffic study done for new development does not take into account safety. Traffic studies measure traffic flow in ways to immediately rate increased traffic, so there's really no way to measure safety when considering new developments and driving behavior is suggested. At the DOT's recommendation, I contacted the South Carolina Department for Highway Safety. I submitted a FOIA request and released stats on collisions on Pleasant and Whitley Road. Since 2018, there have been 150 collisions on Pleasant Road. I've provided you with that data in email, and it's what I just passed out. There have been 37 injuries and one death. And remember, traffic was significantly below average in 2020 and even into this year as many people still work and attend school remotely. I believe the safety and traffic concerns of this location should be taken even more seriously considering the approved Pleasant Vista mixed-use development. This development will allow approximately 900 residences directly across the street behind the elementary school, middle school, and north towards Gold Hill Road. There are no other connector roads being planned to mitigate the increased traffic. I believe we need to see what impact this proposed development has on the safety of this stretch of Pleasant Road before we approve further development here. As Fort Mill continues to grow and develop, it is the duty of our elected officials and our private citizens to ensure that Fort Mill retains the qualities that made it such an amazing place to live: green spaces, reasonable traffic, and a high level of safety. Thank you very much for listening. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I remember you from previously.
We were here last time.
Remember.
He lived his age, and he said he wanted to speak. He did not want to prepare anything.
Sure.
Did you still want to say anything?
I'm not sure.
You're not sure.
That's okay, honey.
You got to stand. Okay, come over here and say one day.
I thought that might happen.
It's okay. We understand.
Great. I've emailed everything to y'all with copies, and I've spoken with the developer, I've spoken with the contractor, and I, it's a lovely development. I just don't think this location is right.
I just don't want this to happen because there's animals around here, and I love animals, and I just don't want to get the story, like squirrels and birds around here that I love, and I want to tell the story. One day, one time I was playing with my friend on my trampoline, and then a squirrel fell into it. It couldn't get, and it couldn't get out, and then it was like struggling to get out, and then it got out, which was so funny.
Yeah, we love that.
I love, yeah, especially the frogs.
And we found a turtle this morning, right?
Yeah.
Found a turtle this morning.
And this is my brunt, because I love frogs, and I've seen many frogs around here, so we don't want, we don't want to get kicked on the ground. And also, there's baby birds around here that I see a lot in spring, and it is spring, so I see them a lot now, and in the trees.
Say this.
So, I don't want any trees getting cut down because there's like plenty of them that's in there, especially the squirrel.
I understand. Takes a lot of courage to stand up and talk, so thank you so much.
Not our favorite, but thank you so much. We appreciate it. Thank you for coming.
Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you. Take care.
Y'all have a good evening. Ma'am?
Yeah. Good to see you, ma'am.
Yes, and it's less than that because of the access hospital took up residential, but it was that much.
I thought I got two. Gee.
Hey.
Yes.
Hi there.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for joining us.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Mayor?
Yes.
Council, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank you for everything that you do in the Town of Fort Mill, and I'm here today to speak on the pending annexation of the Pleasant Road MXU development, and we would like to take this time to defer until the June 14 meeting. And the reason that we're requesting that it be deferred is so that we have an additional opportunity to meet with the residents of the Whitley Mills subdivision to make sure that there's a clear understanding as to what is included in the mandated traffic mitigation agreement, and then also what's included in the development agreement that we felt that we put together that would have the least amount of impact on the Whitley Mills subdivision. So, at this time, we would request, respectfully request a deferance.
All righty. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We appreciate you coming.
Mayor, was that winged, Ray?
It was.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. We're waiting on the additional folks that came to make comments, and then is Barry on the phone tonight?
I am, Mayor.
Okay, I'll talk to you after we finish. We have another lady to join us. Hi.
Hi, I'm with the last, I'm with Beaver Creek, and I can't think if you would consider to defer the first reading of the annexation and the development conditions for Pleasant Road, Whitley, MXU.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Who's she?
She's with the actual developer.
Great. Here's your name.
Hi.
Hi, I'm Nancy Pace, and I'm a member of Whitley Mills Town Hall, and in 78, when we moved here, there was one elementary school, and a middle school, and one high school. Fort Mill now has 17 high schools and 17 schools for our children, and if you count the Catholic school, there's four high schools. I understand that the medical building is going to be built on Vista Road along with 500 to 900 homes. We've had one person killed on Pleasant Road. He was a teenager, and we've had one person that the guard that we pay for was holding up a flashing sign, and the lady plowed into him, and he was taken to the hospital. He was, he had broken bones, but he was okay. Since the signs have gone up at the red light on Whitley Road and Pleasant Road, the signs have been knocked down two times. People do not do, do not understand why 40 miles an hour is here. We don't need this annexation. We have enough problems without it, so please consider turning it in. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Nancy. We appreciate you coming.
Hi.
Hi.
I have some papers.
Okay, and you are?
My name is Sarah Schick.
Okay.
I live on 147 Whitley Mills Road. My son is eight years old, and he wanted to speak, but he has it all learned by him and doesn't have a voice. So, I've so copied his letter and the pictures that we sent of our flying squirrel in the backyard. We do that just directly against the housing or the development that's being proposed, but I can run through his lateral text because it's hard to read, but he said, "In my opinion, I think we should not let the property owner cut the forest behind my house." I think he should because there are coyotes in the forest, and they could get harmed or killed, or Fort Mill could be crowded with homeless coyotes. There's a flying squirrel in my birdhouse, and they could go through the same thing. We need air to breathe, and the trees produce air, so there would be less air compared to right now. In conclusion, I think we should not let the property owner cut down the forest. So, his is done. I have some points as well.
Is that a pet squirrel?
No. And you see my hand in the picture, holding the birdhouse, I was trying to get a good angle. He is completely not threatened by us. Why is this? My two-year-old, we knock on him, comes out, says hi, puts a ooh and ah in his mouth. But he's incredible. We love the nature and everything behind there. But I am also opposed to the rezoning for the annexation and the MXU designation of the property for a couple of reasons. My first point is safety. Of course, my eight-year-old son crosses that street, Whitley Road and Pleasant Road to get to school every day. There, as you are probably very well aware, there were two recorded incidents of pedestrians being hit in front of our community, and then the one, the tragic accident on Pleasant Road. There's also several, like, unrecorded, very close calls with the crossing guard on duty. It's terrifying. There's so many moms in our community that just don't feel safe anymore, crossing even with our paid crossing guards. The, I just, Pleasant, Whitley Road is extremely dangerous because it's really a cut through through caroweth or season. It's a dangerous cut through windy roads, and I don't think it can support that many homes in such a small area. I'm not, my, I'm not opposed to development in the area. I know development is inevitable. Fort Mill is growing. It's just, I, sorry, is the high density housing exactly what we're looking for to, like, for the future of Fort Mill? I believe that would be a beautiful property to develop single-family homes or something with lower density that can still be, that can still be beautiful, preserved for Fort Mill as it is, not turn it into, to the Charlotte. That's really all I have to say. Thank you for listening to me.
Well, thank you for coming, and we appreciate your comments. Mm-hmm.
(Inaudible).
There you go.
It's just, I, sorry, um, is, is the high density housing exactly what we're looking forward to, like, for the future of Fort Mill? I believe that would be a beautiful property to develop single-family homes or something with lower density that, um, can still be, that can still be beautiful, preserved, uh, Fort Mill as it is, not turn it into, into Charlotte. Um, that's really all I have to say. Thank you for listening to me.
Well, thank you for coming, and we appreciate your comments. Mm-hmm. There you go. Sarah Schick.
Hi, just state your name.
Oh.
Hi. Good evening.
My name is Mark Sealy. Uh, my wife and I have lived in the Whitley Mills subdivision for eight years. Uh, we moved on here from, uh, Charlotte, uh, and I just retired from the University of South Carolina. But, um, I just wanted to, you know, voice our concern about this, uh, new development, uh, that has been proposed. Um, I think for a couple of reasons. Uh, I think if, if you're gonna do it, it should be conceived better. Um, my wife and I's main concern is the only entrance and exit on Whitley Mills. Uh, I think that's gonna prove to be a disaster. And then just the number of townhomes and units that are gonna be in that small section of land. So, uh, you know, we're opposed to it, uh, and I just wanted to give you my reasons why. Now, we live in Marblewood. Our backyard doesn't, you know, bump up to that, but still, we're, you know, we're concerned for, you know, the project, and if it is approved, we hope it will be better conceived with maybe, uh, uh, an entranceway on, uh, Pleasant Road instead of Whitley Mills. So, thank you, um, for giving me this opportunity to voice my thoughts.
Well, thank you for joining us. We appreciate.
First time.
Um, don't make it your laugh. Thank you, Mr. Sealy.
I actually remember your emails, sir, so I appreciate people who actually write them.
Yeah.
'Cause I get inundated with all these chain emails, and all they do is change the name at the bottom, but I remember you actually writing one, so I thank you very much for taking your time and doing that.
Thank you.
Copy and paste. Yeah, the old copy and paste.
Hi.
Hi, how are you?
Good.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
I oppose to the annexation, um, just the mere traffic, the nine hundred plus or whatever that plan is that's gonna be developed. Two schools sitting there, and kids coming back and forth across the street. We've already had one kid, one killed in the last two years. Completely opposed.
Your name, so we can?
David Wilford, four twenty-five Silver Cypress.
Thank you so much, Mr. Wilford.
Just state your name and you begin.
Hi.
Hi, Eric Geifer.
Okay.
How y'all doing?
Good.
Just telling you a brief story. I moved down here, uh, from Pennsylvania about five years ago. And I was looking at houses all over the place, but Fort Mill's proximity to where I work was perfect. And the whole feel of Fort Mill, we actually lived in a Brayden off of one sixty, the apartment. And, um, I was so proud of those apartments. It felt like, uh, my own little resort. And slowly after probably three years, I just noticed, I don't know, things kind of go on the decline. We moved out, and you look at Brayden now, they're putting the, the whole complex in front of it. I'm glad I moved out because of that. Um, and if you just look at the traffic on one sixty, the bridge is shut down down here, right up Pleasant Road. I was trying to get here. Usually it's a five-minute drive, but it took me about twenty minutes just due to the bridge being out. Um, young family, married, thinking about having kids, and I moved for, to Fort Mill for a reason. And, um, I feel like I'm kind of losing that just in the five years I've been here. Uh, now, that's me. I, I like more of a rural area, um, but I just see Fort Mill going in a direction that potentially I wouldn't want to stay. Now, I'm a, I backed up to the woods. I love the development, but, um, Whitley Mills currently, but, uh, just the traffic I see coming, it seems like any little piece of property, any little bit of acreage there is in Fort Mill, it's developed immediately. And, uh, it's just something that, I don't know, I've been getting a little bit tired of it, and I, I don't want to see any more of it happening 'cause I like Fort Mill the way it is right now. Thank you all.
Thank you so much.
So do I. I just looked it up. Not that development either. I thought that was odd.
Mm-hmm. Pretty impressive.
Hi, my name is Linda Lang.
Okay.
Seven twenty-six Petersburg Drive. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm new to the area, um, but I just wanted to voice my concern, um, and I think it just comes down to the numbers and the road is being able to support the numbers that are there. Specifically in this area, um, I think it's access for the local children to be able to get through to the school because we're closed down for COVID, but eventually it's gonna open up for more activities and everything. So, thank you, Lieutenant, for listening to me.
Absolutely. Thank you for coming to share your concern. Thank you. Hi, and you are?
Gerardo Ramirez.
I won't even try to spell that, but thank you for joining us this evening.
Um, address four five three Silver Cypress Lane, with me.
Mm-hmm.
And I have concerns. I'm opposed to the annexation, um, presented here due to safety concerns, traffic concerns. I don't think the, the roads are developed for such amount of, um, building, housing that is being presented. I do believe there is an issue for housing. I think you can hear that in the news, because it's in the streets. But I, I, I have to believe that there has to be some catch-up to do before that in terms of road development. If it's something you can share with me, I would appreciate from the feedback that I'm giving to you.
I think that we're at a point that we have been requested to review the information for the proposed annexation and the proposed development. So we are hearing everyone out and reviewing all of that information and have not yet made a decision. So as far as providing feedback, we're still in our discovery phase, and we're working hard to hear out everyone that has a concern.
Is it a discovery phase including traffic development?
Of course, of course.
But you have to understand, the town doesn't own Pleasant Road. That's a state or not state, or that's a county road. So whatever they choose to do is what they, we can't just widen it because we would like, we would love to widen a lot of roads. So, but we're gonna look at the traffic study from that and the traffic studies that we've collected from the other developments that are going on in Pleasant and try to figure everything all out.
When you say that we don't own the road, is something that you just sit back and say, cannot do anything? Or you go back and, and talk to the county?
I can, just like what you're doing right. I would be you in front of the county.
Well, I sit on the regional transportation group, our FATS, and we do look long range, uh, up to thirty, forty years into the future for what is entitled and what type of traffic changes occur. It is an extremely comprehensive process, but we're always behind because that's the nature of how growth occurs. It takes many years to plan, expand, and construct, uh, a new road system or the changes that would need to occur. So we're in a position as a town council to be addressing whether this would benefit the community, Fort Mill, or not. Because currently, you live in the county, and we are being asked to bring that into the town of Fort Mill, so then it would be developed thusly. So at this point, we've been listening to everyone's concerns and the developers' plans, and we will make a decision.
You said it would develop the community. How would it benefit the community?
That's for each.
We'll find out.
That's for each council member. Everybody has one vote, and that's for each council member to determine before they cast their vote.
So council members define the benefits to the community?
We are elected to do just that. We are elected independently. We are not elected as a team. We are elected independently, but we serve as a team. So we discuss every issue, and we make a decision based on the information and what each person feels is correct, and then the majority, uh, that votes one way or the other makes that decision.
Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
Hmm.
And I think that's a lot of the issues. A lot of people don't know what our role is.
No, they don't.
Or the county's role, or, and how we're all intertwined and everything.
That is right. We have no further, um, participants for the public hearing, so we will now officially close the public hearing. Uh, with that, I will entertain a motion on the first reading of the same ordinance asking for annexation of York County Tax Map Number six five three zero 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 two one zero.
I make a motion. Can you table that vote until the next, what do you want, the intent?
The important one.
Barry, can you guide us? Because there is a, Barry and Penelope. There's a process. Uh, we had to do the public hearing this evening because we had already announced it, we already noticed it, and people had already made plans to come before us. But we couldn't really just do that, because we'd have no way of contacting everyone individually that would have seen that and made plans to be here. On the other hand, they did tell us earlier this week, as far as the developer, the broker, the people involved in the development itself, that they would like to see our vote delayed. What is the normal process for a delay request that comes from a developer once we've already put it in our agenda and we've already held the public?
Mayor, I think what you've got to do is not, and, and Jamie, I'll go back to your motion. I would not make a motion to table.
Okay.
I would make a motion to, I would make a motion to defer this item to a, to a future meeting. Uh, I would, however, republish, um, if you're gonna defer it, I, at an abundance precaution, I would republish, um, the notice of public hearing, and I would defer it and have another public hearing if that's what is necessary. Um, not necessarily to, to next, to the morning meeting, but maybe to the, um, evening meeting in June.
So, here's a tough question. What, if anything, will change in regards to this request between now and June?
I don't know. I have no earthly idea. Based on what I'm seeing.
Penelope. I'm looking at Penelope, Mr. Mack. Sorry.
Yeah, at this time, I mean, based on what I heard from the applicant, um, they would like to have more time to be able to meet with the HOA of Whitley Mills. That's the only thing that I heard tonight. That would change.
So, it, I guess my question wasn't extremely clear. Let me be more clear. Would they, if given this month, to go and talk with those that are opposed to the development? What would happen if they decided to make changes to the proposed development? Would they not have to go back to the planning commission and start over again?
Yes, ma'am.
Yep.
Everybody understand that, those two council members that are virtual?
Yes.
Yes, if we defer and allow another month, which I understand the developer wanting to talk with all of the residents and the HOA of the development, but if in those discussions they make a change to what they're going to do, supposing they decide to work with the residents and have a different entrance to the neighborhood? They then, they then would have to go back and start over with the planning commission and the town, and that we'd be right back here again.
Mm-hmm.
Is that not?
Correct.
Am I correct?
Correct.
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 All right. I will be clear, that's all. All right, Jamie has put.
I'm gonna change my motion from tabling until, and defer this new business item number one until the next June evening meeting, is that, which would be the fourteenth.
All right, I have, uh, a motion and a second to defer this item to the June fourteenth meeting. Because we have two members virtual, and I can't see you, um, everyone that will support the motion for deferral, please say aye.
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 Okay, and everybody that doesn't say nay, nay. So it's a five-one vote. Okay?
Mayor, mayor.
Yes.
Mayor, I'm assuming the next item, the next item appears to be for the, uh, approval of the development agreement related to this project.
That is correct.
So I would just go ahead, when you take up that item, just go ahead and, and somebody make a motion if, if, if it's, if it's appropriate in your mind to defer that item, um, to the next meeting.
Okay, uh, this is new, um, Mr. Mack is correct. New business item number two. Uh, do we need to hold that public hearing as well since it has been noticed? Do we have anyone here to speak on it?
Well, let me, if I, if I can go back outside to just check it.
All right, we're gonna open the public hearing at this point, and you check and see if anybody is available. Opening the public hearing for an ordinance adopting a mixed-use concept plan and development conditions for the Pleasant Whitley MXU project, Ward Two, Ronnie Hounds. Back again. I hope you have something different, different to say.
Yeah. Uh, but anyway, my name is Wink Ray. I'm with Cooster Commercial. Again, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity today to speak with you in regards to the development conditions that are related to the Pleasant Road MXU. And at this point, uh, we would respectfully request a deferance of that until the June fourteenth council meeting.
Okay.
Susan Rosen West, Beaver Creek. Um, I do want to add this, and I'm not sure if Wink said this before. We have reached out to, um, a hu, a couple of homeowners who are trying to find a property owner. We, we've requested that information to try and, um, get those guys together. I do think there's some misinformation on what, what we're willing and, and we're trying to do.
Okay, alrighty.
Thank you so much. Everybody have a great evening.
Thank you. You too.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, we're gonna close the public hearing if there are no further, um, interested parties. Public hearing is closed. Uh, as, uh, Attorney Mack has mentioned, this item is related to the previous item that we deferred. Do I have a motion on this particular item?
I make a motion to defer new business item number two until the June fourteenth meeting also.
Okay, I have, uh, a, a motion to defer and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, Mr. Moody?
I said aye.
I couldn't hear you. I'm sorry. And then, uh, okay, okay. I'm a nay. Thank you. Okay, to five-one again. Now we'll move to yet again another public hearing, new business item number three. An ordinance annexing York County Tax Map Number seven zero eight zero 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 two four and seven zero eight zero 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 three seven, containing approximately point nine nine plus or minus acres located on one zero two nine Sprat Street. This is Ward One, Jamie Shirey, and Penelope is our expert. We will open the public hearing at this time.
Is that, uh, adequate for any?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, also, Mayor, I may, I'm not sure if the applicant is online, Mr. Dwayne Dool. Jewel, are you on? Jewel, are you on the call? Okay, if not, his associate is outside and signed up.
Okay. And let us note, Davey, for future meetings, that if everyone else has to show up in person, that's what we'll do. Won't take any call-ins on any presentation on any level, okay? Please. Hi.
Hey, is the owner off? Let's wait if he goes.
We can hear better and you're at a distance.
Okay, perfect. I'm RJ Minoney. I am one of the owners of Little York Brewing Company that is hoping to get the 1029 Sprat Street annex down the street, off of Sprat Street down there.
Okay.
You own both sides?
No, sir. We're going to be doing one of the two sides. Craig Carriage that's in there currently is keeping his side on the left side looking at it.
So one side of the building will be county, one side of the building will be town?
Oh, no, sir. He owns the whole, he owns the whole building and he's trying to hold it in. Yes, I'm here.
He's trying to get an understanding.
Sorry, no, the whole building is trying, we let the annex, the entire building.
Okay.
So what I just heard for clarity, for those that aren't in the room physically, is that this is an annexation for the entire building, but there may be two uses in the building. Okay, thank you. Okay?
That's all, guys. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Or do we have any further participants for the public hearing?
Not for the public hearing, ma'am.
We will close the public hearing at this point in time. Now we will move into the first reading of the same. An ordinance annexing York County Tax Map Numbers 708-0000-024 and 037. Do I have a motion on this item?
I make a motion to accept new business item number three. Second.
I have a motion to accept in two seconds. All right, Penelope, would you like to talk to us about it?
Sure. Good evening. This is a contiguous to Town Limits property and it's eligible for annexation. You know, it is two parcels. The current building that's there is currently the printing shop that Mr. Dwayne and his wife Jewel owns the property. And RJ is also one of the owners for Little York Brewery that would like to also develop in that site. So they would like to come into the town of Fort Mill and they would have the zoning classification of a mixed-use zoning district. And so they did not need to have a traffic TIA because it did not trigger the TIA for that type of uses. We have the printing shop and then Little York Brewery would have a brewery, but they would also have some space for people to repair bikes. And the reason, and this could be in the future.
Bicycles?
Yeah, bicycles. The reason why they see, you know, Fort Mill growing and having access to trails and, you know, with Elizabeth comes the Sprat property will be some trails. So they see a market as people are walking to come to the brewery. Maybe they have something they would like to fix. It's very small. It's a very accessory use. Primarily, it's the printing shop and the brewery. The planning commission recommended approving the annexation request by vote seven zero. Commissioner Wolf did have some concerns about some traffic and number of accidents that have occurred on Sprat Street, but staff did tell them how a TIA was not triggered at this time.
Okay.
And they did acquire more property for parking, correct?
They have another phase, but if you look.
Another, they went in several feet down below there and cut an access in.
Yes, and there's some pavement, I believe, behind the existing.
Yeah.
So I have a couple of questions, and I think I've asked you previous to our meeting. This particular property is contiguous to the Town Limits, which is required for any annexation. We cannot unless there's a vote on a particular piece of property. It needs to be contiguous for this council to even consider annexation. So that's one thing that is settled. Second, I think it's important to note that Sprat Street is zoned highway commercial. I think, you know, when I grew up, I grew up on Sprat Street and it was residential. There were several spotty businesses, but during my lifetime, that was changed to highway commercial. I also believe that in the Elizabeth neighborhood, there is a strip area that is designated for commercial development up on Sprat Street, which is also known as 21 Business. So I just want to make those things clear to people that probably haven't looked deeply into this particular item. So just saying, you know, as we make decisions, I for one welcome businesses and this seems to be a fit with the previous designation and other businesses coming to that area. Does anyone have any questions?
How about the parcel that's kind of orphaned on the other side of Sprat? What is their intention with it? They have that there, but if you look on page.
He's talking about up on the hill where Mark's garage used to be.
Oh, that's further, that's further down. I think, I believe that's in the county.
Yeah, it is county.
Yeah, that is not part of.
I'm looking at the comprehensive thing and it has that drawn in with that property. And then that property, I thought it was grandfathered in for a print shop because it was approximately close to that creek line. So it had to remain a.
There was a print shop in it before.
Right, there's a print shop in it before. So in order for it to stay, it had to be a print shop. It couldn't turn into anything else. Are they still in compliance with that now that they're splitting it off?
They're in York County, so that's why they're grandfathered in. With bringing it into the town, that's why they're doing the, I mean, they could do highway commercial, but we felt the mixed-use would be compatible if they have restricted uses or permitted uses. And that printing shop is allowed to remain.
So it is annexation and a zoning change.
Okay.
I guess a question I should have asked earlier, are they going to, is this going to be a brewery where you can actually go into the business? Or is it going to be a manufacturing type of business?
I believe at this time, and maybe Mr. RJ can answer that, it is like a business. You can go into the brewery, sit down and have a.
And they will have to follow all the requirements within the state to get a license to have alcohol that close to an elementary school or a church or whatever. So everyone that goes into business in that arena must follow the state's guidelines to be licensed to do so.
That is correct.
That is not within our purview, nor do we issue licenses for that. So I just want to make sure everybody understands. All right, any further questions? Hearing none, the motion on the table is to approve and we have a second for that. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, nay. All right. Unanimous decision. We will now move into first reading and public hearing, and we'll do the public hearing first. An ordinance adopting a mixed-use concept plan and development conditions for the Creighton Heritage MXU project, Ward One, Jamie Shirey. Is this the same project?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I just didn't see Creighton in the first block, so I just want to make sure what.
That's his name that he's calling that MXU.
I gotcha. Okay, we'll open the public hearing at this time.
He's still out there.
So he's still on Sprat, on Sprat Street, right?
Mm-hmm. Okay.
We will close the public hearing as we have no participants asking to be heard. Now we will go into the first reading. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to accept new business item number four. Say it.
I have a motion and a second. Does anyone have any questions in regards to this adopt mixed-use concept plan? Hearing none. All those that favor the motion to approve, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. All right. Now we're going to move to new business item number five. First reading of an ordinance to amend Section 14-11 of the Code of Ordinances for the Town of Fort Mill as it relates to candidate filing deadlines and fees. Mr. Pettit is our expert. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to accept new business item number five.
You are on roll. Motion and second accepted. Mr. Pettit, would you like to speak with us?
Mayor, the purpose of this ordinance request is to make changes to the filing fees and the filing deadlines for any candidates running for mayor and town council. This is in an effort to help standardize that process, make it easier to implement on both the county and town's behalf, the county being the one that manages our election process. And then also just making it simpler for candidates running for office. As of today, for the filing fees, the first candidate is required to pay a filing fee of $100. If there is a subsequent candidate, they pay $50. And then we, as the town or the county, then have to go and reimburse the first candidate $50. So it's a little bit of a cumbersome process. So this ordinance would standardize that and put it as a flat fee of $100, no matter what order in which you are filing, whether you're the first candidate to file or the last. That fee is certainly up for discussion from town council, but as it's currently drafted, the fee is set at a $100 flat fee. And just as a reminder to everyone, that money that the town gets from those filing fees helps to offset the overall cost to the town for running the elections. The county runs those elections and then bills the town for whatever cost it is for those precincts and polling locations within the town limits. The second item for this ordinance is standardizing the filing deadlines for candidates. Currently, our ordinance says that the cutoff for filing is 12:00 noon, 60 days prior to the date of election. In an effort to standardize that against the remainder of elections in York County, the ordinance proposes to remove the 12:00 noon requirement and instead allow candidates to file up to the close of business 60 days prior to the date of elections. With that, I've had to answer any questions that you may have.
Anybody have any questions?
We're trying to get that changed 15 years.
We had a comment that we've been trying to get this changed for 15 years, so we're somewhat happy to be reading and hearing this. Any further questions?
I'm trying to.
Hearing none, the most.
Can I ask a question? So the main change is that it's moving from noon, is that?
That's one of the changes.
Yeah, it is. Thirdly, you have to file by noon on the 60th day prior to the election. The change would be you just have to file by the close of business on the 60th day. And that's how the other jurisdictions handle it in the county. And so that's what this ordinance proposes.
Thank you.
So it's a bipolar, though. It's a change in fee and it's a change from a noon deadline to an end-of-business-day deadline. Everybody got that? All right, hearing that, we have a motion on the table to approve and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All those opposed, nay. All right. Now we will move to new business item number six. Emergency ordinance extending prior temporary measures for town council and other appointed board and commission members to participate in meetings electronically during the COVID-19 emergency. Chris Pettit is our expert. I'm going to need a motion on this one.
I make a motion to approve new business item number six.
And do I have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. I do not see a timeframe on just the document. I can open it up. But I for one would like for us, I think, Davey, you have an opening plan in our information and discussion item. I am ready for us to reopen and to do business as we were elected to do. I know that the virtual meeting opportunity has really helped us in protecting the health and safety of each other. I do think we have moved to a time that we can do this safely and be in the same room. And I do believe there's a benefit to that. So I'm just making that opinion known. Chris, what extension are we looking at?
Looks like 60 days.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to say that.
As the others, it would be a 60-day, which is the maximum length that they allows us to do an emergency ordinance. So as of today, the existing, or the prior emergency ordinance remains into effect until May 25th. So this ordinance would extend that another 60 days through July 24th, if approved.
Hmm, okay. All right. Any questions for Christopher?
I just say, I'm with you. I'd like to get back to normal again. And if things arise, we can always come back and implement it and please.
So do you hold up to your motion?
Well, just because I said we're going to, that doesn't mean I'm going to vote for it.
Okay. All right.
I'm Quinn. Yes. Yes, so this is Ms. Cook. And asking about this, I certainly understand the need for it. And I will say, having so many people in person tonight for the public hearing, it seems like the public is comfortable getting back in person as well. So I think that does mean a lot. Being virtual tonight, I do feel at a little bit of a disadvantage to those in person and understand the direction that I feel like you are leaning as well. But my one question is, and just for consideration, is there a way to have a little bit of both worlds? In that when we have meetings where it is public input and in person and a vote is being taken to be in person, but yet a workshop or more of just an informational meeting with a virtual? I just didn't know if staff happened to know if there is any in-between from any other municipalities.
I don't know.
Mr. Pettit, what she's asking?
Yes, I do understand. I'm not sure if I know of any specific examples, but what this, what this emergency ordinance does is it allows you to participate, but it is up to the boards to determine their process and whether or not they choose to utilize the allowance of the electronic participation. So it certainly would be an option if this ordinance was approved, that council could determine on a case-by-case basis which meetings or in which situations the town council meetings were electronic and the planning commission or the zoning appeals historic review board and others could do the same.
Did that answer your question, Ms. Cook?
Yes, somewhat. I mean, again, I just, I think there can be an in-between, but I would love for us, even after this vote, to continue to monitor because I think we have all learned a different way of doing business, but I also understand the concern too of staying out of the routine. I feel like public does expect us to be in person as much as possible. And that's odd for me to say, knowing that I'm virtual tonight.
I do think it's important to note that without the virtual option, we would not have had the ease of continuing the town's business during an unheard-of year. However, it also brought to my mind the importance of being face-first. I think I've never felt so isolated. And even though the virtual is good, it's not the same. It is not the same. And I feel like we were elected to be in front of the people and to do the business of the people in front of the people. And I just prefer it that way. So that's my opinion and it's my thought, but I certainly will go with whatever the vote renders. But in my opinion, we need to be here. So I guess we certainly ask other staff that have yet to take a break at all, that continue to provide town services throughout the entire year. So I for one would like for us to go back to in-person meetings. Trudy, did you have a comment?
I was just going to say, I agree with everything she said. I think that the public, the citizens, the residents really would like to see us.
I found it hard to do input because you didn't know when to talk or when not to talk. Everybody talking, trying to find a place to get into the conversation.
Right.
Like from here, you know, we didn't recognize each other as far as.
Yeah, we don't want to be rude with each other, you know? I get that. So with that, the motion on the table and the second is to approve the ordinance extending temporary measures. All those in favor of approving that extension, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay.
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 Okay, so we've got a unanimous vote on that. Thank you. All for your patience as we work through exactly what these things are. So we're going to move to an information discussion period. Information discussion item number one, plan to reopen town buildings to the public. Davey. Davey Broom, we do not need a motion or second to have an information discussion. So, thank you, Davey.
Thank you, Mayor. As you were saying a few months ago, we've been closed now, or our town buildings have been closed to the public for over a year now due to COVID-19, and we want to take precautions because of that. Over that time, town staff has sought out opportunities to continue to provide excellent customer service to our citizens and businesses throughout that time, and it's worked fairly well with that, and I think we've succeeded. But we are ready to open back up. During that time period, we have taken the opportunity to upfit our main lobby in our town hall with safeguards such as plate glass, physical barriers, sneeze guards, and social distancing markers. We have sanitizer locations as well. Our plan is to open back up all of our town buildings as of May seventeenth, which is a week from today. We have met as staff, prepared to bring our teammates that were working remotely back into the office and get them prepared. They're doing that this week and in preparation of opening back up to the public on Monday morning at eight-thirty. We will have some safeguards also in place for town hall. Again, the floor markers for the social distancing will keep everyone six feet apart for any citizens or public to come into the building. Masks will be required. We will provide free disposable masks for anyone who does not have one. We will place informational signage, letting everyone know that the business office is back open and to follow COVID guidelines or continue to follow COVID guidelines. We also have designated areas for the public to meet with staff. So, if someone, if a builder comes in and wants to meet with the town staff by a business license or a pulling a permit, we have areas sectioned off just for them to do that safely and keep them out of the lines for the business office. If you. Our police department, again, the lobby will open. It will be open to the public for twenty-four hours a day. It has well been set up with safeguards, sanitizer stations. They'll follow the same guidelines with masks. Also provide free mask as well, and we will update their lobby informational signage for that. Fire department lobby, their operating hours are eight AM to five PM, so they'll start Monday as well. They have very little in traffic coming into their facility, but anyone interested in burn permits and any other miscellaneous items, they're still welcome to come in. Our parks and recreation, we've opened up our programming, our athletic programs, but the Fort Mill Community Center has been closed off, and during that timeframe, there were some basketball groups and pickleball groups that we weren't allowing to come in and participate. We would like to reopen that as of Monday, and to any of the groups that want to take part in those as well, we would have them sign a COVID-19 waiver that we did utilize for all of our athletic programming. We'd also like to start renting the covered shelters again in our parks. It's really not so much about the money, but we have not been renting them, so it was a first-come, first-served basis, and we're thinking about keeping the peace from families that may want to use those. So, the rental fees are not very expensive, but it does secure the location for someone if they rent those in advance so that they know that they have that shelter on the day that they rented it. We would begin the earliest run-on date for that would be this Saturday, the fifteenth. We don't have anyone that's actually requested to rent that, but it gives the option. Rather than wait all the way to Monday, it does open it up for this weekend if they did want to call in one day this week. So, with that, Mayor, those are really the departments that we typically received walk-in traffic from the public, so we would like to go ahead and reopen all those buildings as of Monday morning.
I certainly appreciate the diligence put into the care of reopening, and I look forward to seeing it.
Davey, that would be put on our Facebook page and all the other media that.
Yes, ma'am. We will put that on our website and post all of our social media outlets.
Davey, will we continue to do our council meetings with the live feed that we currently have? Because that was one change that we started making because of COVID.
Council meetings with what, Lisa?
Live feed.
The live feed.
Gotcha, gotcha, gotcha.
Yes, ma'am. I think for the next little while, we will still need to do that. COVID guidelines are still, according to CDC and DHEC, remain six feet apart. So, how we set up town council chambers, if we are allowing, if we allow the public back in for meetings, it will be six-foot spacing. So, for the time being, we will need to continue to have these live versions of our meetings just for that purpose. We can open them back up, have Tony come in and record it.
Sure.
And will the Parks and Rec, will the Parks and Rec team be back at the complex, at the YMCA complex and available?
At this time, that's, we've found it's worked really well to house them in the house out at Dobie's Bridge Park. They have been able to separate well, you know, over six feet apart in that facility. They found that troublesome in the YMCA facility. It's just a, that's designed more for, I would say, two people. We were utilizing that space for four. So, for at least the next little while, we will continue to operate out of the house.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Okay, thank you very much, Davey. We do have one executive session item this evening. Please note that council may take action on executive session items listed on the agenda when they come back into the public session. However, we do not take any vote in executive session, so it's for information and discussion. Tonight's executive session item is discussion of negotiations incident to proposed contractual matters with Crossroads Development Partners LLC. With that, I need a motion to move into the executive session.
I make a motion to move into executive session.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, please say nay. Thank you. We will take a brief moment to secure our room for this executive session. Thank you. Good job. I need a motion to return. Let the record reflect that no vote was taken in executive session, and I need a motion to return to regular session.
Sir, move.
Second.
All right, all those in favor to return, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. Thank you so much. All right, appreciate all the beneficial discussion as we work through how to continue improving the town's processes and relationships. So, thank you so very much. With that, I understand our farmer's market was a huge success on Saturday with, Davey, did you say twenty-eight vendors?
Yes, ma'am.
So, that is amazing, and thank you to the community for their support and Jocana, the Parks and Rec guys, the town utility workers, everybody that pitched in to make this happen, and I'm so proud of it. Thank you very much. Let's see, litter collection, we had another second Saturday service, and I did see bags out by the road.
Yeah, I think, I think they said we collected forty-four bags this week.
That's great.
Today.
And I have noticed I see less litter.
I agree.
I see less litter. That doesn't mean people aren't throwing it out. It means people are picking it up.
We had over fifty volunteers and forty-four bags.
Just for everyone's edification, when I found out today that paving was occurring on White Street near the caboose during our dilemma with the bridge work, I did call the Department of Transportation contact, and he was apologetic. He said the construction side of the house didn't talk to his side of the house, so nobody was notified. You know, it's a precarious position to fussy people for bringing paving to us, which we love to get, but this timing is just ridiculous. So, I just wanted you to know, we did follow up on that. It wasn't anything the Town of Fort Mill could have avoided because we didn't know about it. But that leads me into the last thing I had for tonight. I would like to publicly thank staff for all the work that has gone into the communications efforts surrounding the bridge work. We were not brought in early with the Department of Transportation. We got very little information, and our folks were just dogmatic at getting up with the county, the sheriff's department, and, you know, with the traffic that we've seen, it occurs to me that I need to be careful and not get hurt because it'd be really hard to get somewhere in an emergency vehicle. So, my hat's off once again to all those folks that make that happen and put themselves out there to take care of all of us. So, hats off for communications effort. I see things improving on a rapid basis, and I'm grateful and for everyone trying to stay out of the fray if you can. Fourteen more days and it'll be done. So, with that, anybody else?
Quick, what, the plastic bag initiative that we get? Do we have any, on the benches, yeah? Have we made any headway with that?
Yes, we are currently collecting those at this time, and communications on that will be out very soon.
Very good.
Chris?
I want to thank you for the strawberry festival. It was pretty neat and you can move about and not, you know, have people on both sides of y'all, you know, cramped up and crowded, but I know that brings a lot to our town, but it was really neat. The band was good and, you know, food trucks. It was just a good time, so good job on that, and thank you for everything that went into it.
Awesome. Lisa?
I'd be remiss if I didn't mention congratulations to all the college graduates out there. I know Davey and I both have one that just finished up, so it's a nice accomplishment, a lot of hard work that the kids have done to make it this far, but we still have more to go. Still, school is still in session in this area a couple more weeks, or I guess what, about six more weeks, I think? So, just be cautious as we're driving around town. Be safe and know that there's still kids out playing of all afternoons now. So, just be careful, and congratulations, graduates.
I had a college graduate from USC.
All righty then. All right, with that, it was very nice talking with each of you. I'll entertain a motion for adjournment. I'm adjourned. I need a second. All right, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay.
Trying to give you all a chance.
You guys have a great week, and thank you bunches.